Again, so we introduced this three years ago. It was two-phase project. Phase one was approved, phase two was not approved. That situation's not getting any better. The unfortunate part of why we have now almost made it three phases, the situation on the ball field side has actually gotten worse. It is going to mean a lot more extensive work to bring that back. So my recommendation would be to do this work so that we don't find ourselves deeper into a hole or into the river, because that's what happened.
And also, I think this is the lowest cost we've seen for asphalt ever, so it seems like an opportune time to make the investment. It has to be done.
It fixes the erosion that, you know, this is a sensitive topic with the recent storms in town, what people are, much of the town's been impacted, but we're looking at it, that was what we were first asking about, is not so much pavement as the erosion, so to rectify that and then also to have the low quote on the pavement, it just made sense to us. It's not something that I didn't, I wasn't sure that I would be supportive of. I tried to keep an open mind, I was a little more biased the other way, but seeing that the erosion will be fixed, that would be up to date. And then we would have a really good return on our investment to complete the three-year project. I ended up changing my mind and feeling strongly, we should do it, so.
My second question is, with the volume of rain that we've had, are we at risk? Is it too saturated? So if we try and do a repair at this point?
No, because we're not, we won't do it to sweep this out, and so we've got the schedule, we're not going to happen all of a sudden, so it'll be happening like immediately.
Because you see what I'm saying? We're already pushing it from the other side.
Yeah, I've had several parents make comments about the ball field, you know, they know this is the back, it's different, that's his own problem, bigger problem, much bigger problem.
And at what point do you think we'll end up addressing that bigger problem?
So we're in a process of collecting quotes, but we're looking at a much bigger number, to thirty thousand, not more, because we're talking drainage and retaining wall to bring that back to its original safety. Hopefully, I would propose that to you by the next year. Will we put that on a warrant out of the law to be in the microprocessor?
In the original motion, there was no dollar cap.
I saw that.
Do we want a cap to our expenditure? Up to?
Yeah, I thought up to count, so just to make sure I understand, the up to leaves twenty-five is the cap, right? We would come before us to prove any more, I think it would be different. Okay, that's all.
So do you want the motion changed?
amended.
I'd amend my motion to approve the spending for the school facility capital reserve fund up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the paving of the back parking lot of the high school. Jesse, are you willing to?
I second the amended motion for up to.
Any further discussion on this? Yeah, I'll put film this part, I'll say anything on that. Okay. I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is approve proposed spending from school facility capital reserve funds for year-end fund balance for site work and building for district transportation department at town highway garage. Let me reread that again, fraction. Approve proposed spending from school facility capital reserve funds for end-of-year fund balance for site work and building at district transportation department at town highway garage. That sounds better. Is there a motion?
So just before you begin, so I'm going to give you a number, but it's based upon the goals I had for anything here. So if you want to wait and amend it, or I can give you a number?
I'll read the number.
Up to, so it'll be up to thirty thousand.
Up to thirty thousand.
You want to do a quick recap for everybody who didn't hear last time, what that's going for?
Yeah, let's, we can vote it up or down based upon the information presented. So would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve spending from the school facility capital reserve funds or end-of-year fund balance for site work at the transportation, at the town highway department.
Can you put the up to thirty thousand in place?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I tucked that in there, it was a mouthful. Up to thirty thousand dollars for that.
Jesse's made a motion, does Jesse's motion have a second?
It'll second it.
Seconded by Ed. All right. Russ, could you explain what it is we're doing, why we're doing it, and then we can discuss as board members what it is we need to do?
So, over the course, over the course of the last few years, we've had a lot of different changes in personnel at both the highway garage and here at the school regarding superintendent, transportation directors, highway directors, a lot of different bus drivers, different director of buildings and grounds, and because of that, we have put forth, and what you'll be seeing coming up next is a memorandum of understanding. It's sort of rules and procedures in which we will function collaboratively in this space. And one of the things that have happened in the past is that we were able to be with inside the town garage in what was called the mechanics area, and through concerns for our insurance companies, having people in and out of the garage, sort of waiting, they were worried about safety concerns, and there were some other things regarding access that the highway department is looking into and working on. And because of that, came the memorandum of understanding. And with that, not really having a place, now appropriate place for our bus drivers and transportation director to meet in the morning and/or afternoon, after they do their pre-check of their buses, to be able to then coordinate, give their buses in the wintertime a time to warm up, properly warm up, and then to talk about routes and what was going on that day and then disperse. This allows us, a place that is our own, to be next to our buses, would be an insulated building, would have a heat source, it would have power. At times, if they needed to be training for our bus drivers, whether that's doing recertification or just training, that we have new bus drivers coming on, potentially that could be done there as well. But this gives us some ownership, it also allows us to put some of the things that are in cold storage that are currently up there, that are going away, the town is moving away from their cold storage units, and it will allow us to house some of those things in there, as well as take some of our other liquids that are in, and some of our teams that we may need to do minor repairs on our buses, and put them all in one location where there's accessibility for our drivers and our transportation director, without having to worry about who's in the garage, or do I have access to the garage, or do I don't have access to the garage? So that's how we are here. What we have looked at are two different options. We looked at a shed, a fourteen-by-twenty-four shed. Again, you see the price work there, and the price work estimate that we have was for about sixty-seven hundred dollars, that includes flattening and putting a slab down, there's some filling on the back edge where it's proposed to go, there's an electrical service that needs to be brought up to speed. Currently, our buses, our diesel buses have, they have a set of plugs that they plug into for the wintertime to keep that diesel fuel and the heaters warm on those. We will just, that has to be upgraded because it's falling in, to where it's, again, it's on the back edge and it's sort of falling in and falling apart. We're going to upgrade that, at the same time, we'll run the electricity over to the new facility, we'll finish the interior. So the shed cost is roughly twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars. We also looked at the trailer from Tilt and Trailer. We're talking about an eight-by-twenty, and really, what it is, is a storage unit that somebody put some windows in, and the price for that, again, with the site work included, electrical included, purchase price and delivery fee is about twenty-six thousand dollars. So for about a three-thousand-dollar difference, we're actually going to have facilities that is a little more, what I consider, credible and respectful to put our employees in, to give them an adequate space that they can hold their meetings, do some trainings if needed, without infringing upon space that is needed for the highway garage and them to be able to conduct their work. The other piece to this, either route here, it will be on a slab, but we will be able to pick it up if it happens to be, we need to move it, and move it if we need to. Donna and I have been in discussion, we've talked about developing, you know, a thirty-year lease or whatever it might be, to at least get us to the distant future with this.
Could you break out the, I'll just identify the purchase price of the trailer and other costs?
Yep, so site work, it's estimated at six thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. The electrical work is three thousand dollars, and these are consistent on both trailer and shed. The purchase price for the shed is thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars, the purchase price for the trailer is fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The finished work for the interior of the shed would be three thousand dollars. The heat for the shed would be two thousand dollars, and the electrical, for the interior electrical hook-up is seven hundred and fifty dollars. The total is twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars on the shed, and that's a fourteen-by-twenty-four. The trailer itself, again, same on the site work, same in electrical, purchase price, I think I gave you a fifteen nine ninety-five, and a delivery fee at seventy-five dollars per hour or three hundred and fifty dollars. Total cost for the eight-by-twenty trailer is sixty-nine thousand nine, sixty-five thousand ninety dollars. Sixteen, not, twenty-six, sorry.
Twenty-six thousand.
My little dyslexia kicked in there. Twenty-six thousand ninety dollars. Thank you.
So can I ask why we, is it not feasible to use a third option, where we have a shop here that actually builds sheds for people?
Well, yes. It would be an option if we had the time to do that, and I say that, it would be an option if we had the appropriate students in class and time for him to do that as well. So we would still be paying for materials and labor and all that, but really, we would like to get this in place with the start of this career. We don't have that ability to do that. And I'm speaking that if he could do it, it would take him all of a year, and what that looked like, I don't want to overextend this.
What do they typically sell for when we do comparable sheds for people who are interested when we do it for the school? I'm just trying to get a feel for a homemade shed price compared to a purchased shed price.
I don't think they build anything of size.
So we went out and got some other quotes, and we looked at the ways we built rates and the prefab things that aren't necessarily stick-built, more sort of the aluminum studs or the metal studs, and they were running somewhere around thirty thousand to do very similar work. Again, those are just a shell, instead of a lot more material.
Did we get a quote from Val's?
We did not, but we spoke with them, and they were in that thirty thousand dollar ballpark. So that's why we went with some of the cheaper options at the time.
Is this picture, the sort of what it would look like?
It's a little, not maybe the picture itself, but it's that style, I'm not sure, we'll have the fancy cooler on the top, but it looks a little more elegant next to the pool. But it would be obviously finished off, have some windows, have a storage compartment above it, again, we have dry storage, it would allow us to utilize if we needed to put up a spot in the back to hide our tires in the backside, to get outside, we could cover that. It really would meet our needs moving forward into the future. And again, a big piece of this not only is this an appropriate space, but the highway department is in the process of building a unit up there, and with that, they're getting rid of all that cold storage, and so we would need some place to put that, because we haven't been included into that sort of equation.
And before money's spent, you're going to definitely have assigned weeks in place?
Absolutely. Donna and I talked about that, so we would have a problem. We talked about ninety-nine years, and we said, well, why don't we back off that and look at more of a thirty-year? She said, once we have this discussion tonight, when I would.
Do we have an estimate on the, what the town expects the charges for that lease?
We would go at a...
Like a dollar?
Yeah.
So I just didn't know they were trying to swap anything?
Yeah, we're not looking at a...
The funds can come from two separate sources, do you have a feel for?
So you have any of the board? Thank you, Brian, that's a great question. In your capital reserve right now, where we pull that from is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, so we could easily pull that from there. We are right now, our fund balance, we know we are able to hit what we projected at a hundred thousand dollars going back to the town, and we feel we can fund our two warrant articles, and so we feel there could be potentially the money there to have the thirty thousand to do this as well. I don't have an exact on the fund balance, right? Because there are still too many moving pieces there, but we feel that, again, what we can look at, that we have maybe close to two hundred thousand, I don't want to be stuck to a number because we're still moving, but we could potentially pull that money from there.
And if we did it, we'd go back to the town, correct?
If we did it, we'd go back to the town.
I know the town is going through some tribulations and trials on how to pay for paving roads, so I'm sure the town would appreciate anything we could. So I don't mind, you know, I don't necessarily mind building the shed, but I prefer we take it from the capital reserve, and to be able to turn back the maximum amount to the town and help them with their paving projects in the next...
So just, you asked the right questions, and I'm going to give you another right answer. One of our warrant articles is to put twenty-five thousand dollars into our facility. So we may take twenty-five up because what, it's going right back in, right? So we've somewhat, well, it's somewhat a wash, because we've already got voter approval to do that, we're going to take it out until it's right back in, so giving that money back at the end of the year, I would agree, I would take it out of the facility.
I just...
Go back to the other...
They go back, they go back to the town.
I'm just wondering if we want to forego taking that twenty-five thousand this year?
Is there even approved, can we do that?
That's my friend down there. I don't think you can, because you have voter approval. So the only way we couldn't do it is if we couldn't physically fund it.
Just, I went to a meeting the other night, and they were bouncing figures around of three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road repairs. John, is that, I'd left before the end of the meeting, what did the final figure bounce out at?
Around that three fifty, and come back on Monday with the more specific.
Again, so we know we're able to hit a hundred thousand, though we've projected to give back, right? What that looks like above and beyond that, I can't be exact right now, but we believe it would be definitely higher than a hundred thousand.
And I guess what I'm just saying, if there's items that we can use the capital reserve fund as opposed to, we should, and turn the maximum back to the town, because this is an extenuating circumstance on the town's behalf, that it's, they're really having a hard time, I think, trying to plan for how to pay for it.
I agree, and I suggest maybe we just amend the motion to say that we'll pull it from the capital reserve funds and get rid of the complicated...
I wouldn't mind throwing that out there as an amended, simpler one, because I agree with both of you, all of you, that it should come out of that, so we can get the difference back.
And I also think that it needs to be concluded upon an acceptable agreement. We've been there for twenty, thirty years, I don't want...
A lesson in thirty years?
Go for ninety-nine.
Start at ninety-nine, we got thirty.
I experienced a years-long adventure when I was a Sunape resident, and it partly affected my time on the school board, where there were a lot of agreements with town fathers and different tolerance for different things, and there's turnover, and so in this one, I have the clarity that, you know, there needs to be a reasonable space for our employees to work, and safety and training, those other, and stories of those other things. But for me, the idea with the clarity on the lease, and I think coming out of the, to me, this is what a capital reserve fund is for, aside from the benefit of having to go back, the other money, be able to go contribute to the town, challenges with the larger paving projects, and this is what we save money for, and this gives some clarity, concreteness, written agreement, public expression as to what's been, my sense is a small-town favor for a long time that could have been much more expensive over the years. So if everyone's all set, amend my motion to take the funds from, up to thirty thousand dollars, from the capital reserve fund to do the work at the highway department with the shed and the space for the bus drivers.
And contingent upon the agreement?
Contingent upon, because I did it backwards again. Contingent, most importantly, upon the clarity of the lease. Ninety-nine would be ideal, but going for, you know, amortizing this out over, you know, fifty years, it would be a very great investment, so.
Is that a good bargaining chip for you, if the board only approves fifty years?
I will, we'll be able to...
There are partners in this, although I don't expect this to be very hard to deal with.
I think it was just, again, a ninety-nine is a great number, just to keep it in reason so that it doesn't get lost within the shuffle of the forefathers to come. If it's thirty years, we revisit it in thirty years, there may be somebody still around that could say, yeah, remember it.
Do you have questions? Does one clarify, is specifically the school facility's capital reserve fund correct, not another type?
School facilities...
The school facilities, capital reserve funds.
And second, are we on the lease or on the memorandum of understanding?
No, the memorandum of understanding is...
Is that what you're saying?
Did my motion end up fair enough? Do you want to take two?
I just want to make sure it's the right word.
Just reread it back again for us, Jesse, that would be helpful.
So, I'd like to amend my motion, let me look in at my reading glasses, to approve the spending from the school facility capital reserve fund for the work to be done for the bus shed, contingent on the clarification of the lease. Up to thirty thousand dollars. I missed the punchline again.
So Jesse made the motion, who seconded Jesse's motion? Ed is willing to second, he amended motion?
I'll work on the gracefulness of my motion that's going forward.
Jesse, Ed with the second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our action item list is the proposed memorandum of understanding, otherwise known as M.O.G., between the town and the school. Russ, can you...
So I think I hopefully gave you enough, but it's not.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe if we get a motion, we'll talk about it also.
A motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town and the school.
Motion made by April.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed. Now we're in the discussion phase. So with that, what we're talking about is creating, creating a understanding of access, of use, of when...
Acceptable use conduct between the highway department staff and the transportation department staff regarding the highway garage facility and the transportation garage. Now we have our own facility as well.
So the highway garage has been there for ninety-one? Forget how long it's been there. And we've been there since that time.
My understanding.
So this is, in years past, we've just been operating with a handshake and a smile.
And again, different people, you know...
We're tightening up.
We're probably moving forward in a very reasonable manner regarding accountability, accessibility.
Has all the board members read through the memorandum of understanding?
I did, I had one question, though. It related to saying that a transportation employee can't be there without a highway employee. Have we ever had issues where we need somebody to swing by and grab something out of cold storage, or are we concerned about that language for any, does this happen? I don't know if we read it.
So I don't think, I think it says now that the transportation director would need to be there. Given that we now have our own facility, other than the use of potentially a facility which our bus drivers will have keys to our, access to our buildings, no. I'm not sure in the past, render, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, if I drive one up there on a weekend, they didn't need to go in the facility, if they did, they would have to notify you to get there to get in the facility anyhow, because they don't want to have a key.
Right, and it would have to be called to the facility to allow access instead of...
When we say facility, do we mean not only the building?
Inside the building.
But not the cold storage. Cold storage, or cold storage is going to end up going away, which is why we need space that we can store stuff inside their building. Understood? Okay.
No, I thought it was very thorough.
Any further discussion from board? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our list will be the proposed amount up to twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in the two-point-five, the two-point-five percent?
Two-point-five percent, yes.
Two-point-five percent contingency fund from end-of-year balance.
So before you even step forward, I would ask, given what Brian just said, you may want to just consider in just tabling this into next year, because this would be taking money out of the fund balance that we could, we have the right to put into this contingency fund. Currently, in that fund is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Based upon our budget, we can put approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand into that contingency fund, given what you said, Brian, and maybe in our best interest to contribute back to the town at this time and make sure that money goes back in the fund.
It looks like there's an income balance in this fund, so I would, that'd be my preference.
You're going to say...
Do you need a motion for that, or do we just do it?
Yeah, we're going to say it's tabled into next year.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, next. Approved hiring of proposed third-grade teacher at Sunape Central Elementary School. In your package, you saw that we're hiring our long-term staff. So a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the hiring of a proposed third-grade teacher for the elementary school.
Motion made by April.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed. Any discussion?
Assuming she's working out well, I guess.
Do it, do it, ma.
And did we do the usual open applicant process?
We had sixteen applicants, eleven of whom were actually elementary certified, and we interviewed five.
Any further questions from board?
That's good news.
I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Last on our action item list is, I have on my list, lathe. So I think what we're going to do here is...
Give me permission.
Give our superintendent permission to sell the lathe, power-matic model forty-five that is in stock right now, for X number of dollars.
So we are going to, you're going to give me permission to remove the lathe? If I can get a price for it, the estimated value of that lathe at this current time is between a hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars, and I think Scott gave us a nice breakdown and did some research there. But with that suggested estimated value, there's also the piece that this is probably a five, six-hundred-pound piece of equipment, and if you're willing to come and get it, and I believe you have someone who's interested in coming to get it, and it's not in working condition, they may come and get it and put whatever they need to put it and take it, and I just need permission to do that.
So a motion needs to be made to give permission to our superintendent to disclose...
Discharge of... I do policy on that, sir.
Of school progress, specific people there.
So I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of the lathe.
Seconded.
And I have a question to...
Motion by April, seconded by Jesse.
Sorry, your question? Do we have sort of a book value for this, or are we, or are we issued it anyways? It's not...
So, this is over forty years old, this might have been something that was given to us. Scott, again, did some research in what do we do, invest the conditions, worth the conditions, and the lack of availability, has given us that.
So he's not used the lathe, just sits there and occupies space?
He has been using space, he has three other lathes that he will be using in this support. And again, my understanding from Mr. Goslin a few years ago was that these things were given to us at some point in time, we used them at this point in time.
So the very question is, we don't have to place a lathe?
No, we do not.
And one more question, sorry. In the fifth-grade yard sale a few years ago, we stuck some big equipment out there, did it sell? Was that a worthwhile...
We had some, we had a bidder on the boiler, if I remember correctly. I don't remember if we ended up on a sale, you're not going to think you're here for that, Matt, but I don't think that sale ever went through, and we ended up disposing of it appropriately.
All right, motion's on the floor. Made by April, seconded by Jesse. Any further discussion?
Clarification, the time we just missed it, right? They just had that, so we're not going to hold on to it another year.
So hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the action item portion of our agenda. Next up, the information item, and Russ, I'm going to let you run down through this as you... Russ, I'm going to let you run down through this as you've got most of the information.
And I will go as quick as I can and not delay for any of this. We talked about graduation. Everyone's welcome. Six o'clock this Friday, rain or shine, sending us our students off.
In-class date tomorrow.
Class date tomorrow, one fifteen in the gym. People who love to attend, be ready.
So what's class day?
Different recognitions. They have their will, the plot to see. Showed some nice sort of accolades to one another, funny, good classmates to one another, and also some different recognitions. No meeting in July, we discussed. The Harriman proposal is in there. You gave me permission. We signed that contract for twenty-six thousand dollars. He's going to come and do the X-Bay plus specifications and code issues regarding the elementary school. So that, I felt, was of great value. The ESSO survey, Every Student Succeeds Act survey, it's posted on our website. It's just a request in the Department of Education for parents to go on, take a look at what the new language of ESSO, which is replacing no child left behind, and give you an opportunity to comment and give feedback on that. And then the draft strategic plan that's in there, it's a thirty-eight, forty-page document. I want to thank all the folks on the strategic planning committee. We wanted to bring it to you. We were hoping to hear if you was the final draft. I might just receive some feedback from Nesdeck today. So we've only put it on as a draft, not a final. And we'll bring it to you in August, thank you, as a final. And we'll have it all formatted and all looking pretty and got some pictures in it. And so, but I think if you look and you can see the content, I think we've created a really rigorous plan. And if we're able to, you know, get seventy-five, eighty percent of that thing's done, we will definitely be moving our district forward. And I was just real happy to see things like social, emotional training, looking for ways to recognize students, looking to develop ways for mentors within our faculty and our hiring processes. So just some great conversation there, I think, some great goals and action statements and action steps stress to take to move the district forward. So that's my information.
Great. Any questions from the board on what was presented?
No, just a comment. It was a nice recognition of the students two weeks ago, their academic awards. That was really well done. It was great to see the kids get their time to get called out. Great.
Any other comments or questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll move on to manifest. Go right ahead, April.
I will motion to approve AP manifest two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two and twenty-three, along with payroll manifest two thousand seventeen dash twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by April, seconded by Ed. Any discussion?
I just want to say, for the first time since I've been on the board, it's nice having plenty of signers. I actually showed up the other day just as Brian was leaving. So I could not have Kathy begging us to come in.
All right, so motion on the floor. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify the same, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public forum. This is the portion of our meeting where we open up the public forum to agenda as well as other items, reminding the speakers that it's three-minute allotment time, fifteen minutes total. In the event that we have more speakers than the time the board can extend it, we also ask that the speakers respect the policies that we've adopted relative to content neutral and students and staff. There are other opportunities and venues to speak about those. So I open it up. John?
John Osteen, stage coach. I just want to comment back on the fund balance and the road repair and things like that. And I'll say, speaking as a private citizen, I can't speak for the board of selectmen, but just as a private citizen at the meeting and reviewing the budgets and things, I don't want anyone to leave tonight thinking that the town doesn't have enough money to fix the roads. I mean, there's plenty of money to do the road repairs that are necessary. It is a big number. It was not expected. The projection is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in the highway department section of the budget, there may not be that money. But in the total town budget, every year, the town underspends its budget by somewhere between three hundred thousand and four or five hundred thousand dollars every year, to the point where the town's fund balance five years ago was one million dollars and now it's two million dollars. And that's because of the consistent underspending. So the town right now has a two-million-dollar rainy day fund that could be tapped into at desire. Whether that needs to be tapped into will just depend upon how much extra money is unspent across the total town budget for this calendar year. So it's just a question of whether the money's going to come out of the big pot of gold in the left pocket or the money's going to come out of the big pot of gold on the right pocket. But the town has sufficient funds to do with what it, to do what it needs to do. And every year, it's underspent by quite, quite a bit. And that's just part of what goes on in the town-level budgeting process. And just to give some perspective, I mean, the school district has a twelve-million budget. And I think you typically underspend by a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars. So a pretty small, tiny percentage. The town has a six-million-dollar budget and underspends by, you know, three to five hundred thousand dollars. So it's just a different level of cushion, if you will, built in here. So I just don't want anybody to leave tonight thinking that there's any risk that the roads won't get fixed, or the town's going to run out of money and things like that. And I thought it was very thoughtful and very generous to offer up not putting the twenty-five thousand dollars into the contingency fund so we'll go back to capital reserve. But that, you'd be putting twenty-five thousand dollars into a fund that has two million dollars in it now currently. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness as a taxpayer, but I thought it'd be helpful for people to kind of see the whole big pictures on those numbers.
Thank you, John. All right, seeing no more movement to the microphone, I'll close the public portion of this meeting and move to agenda setting for the next meeting for August. I would like to discuss the strategic plan, begin our budget goals, conversation, and not have a presentation from, because we'll have those two things to talk about, not have a presentation from the staff.
No presentation. Okay.
Ford, concur?
One more item would be, one point, we discussed the handbook and the one failure, two failures, you play sports.
So I'm going to, we'll bring that back.
Mr. Onehand was going to come back. Yeah.
Well, I can bring that in August or we can get it within September. So I don't know if those changes would have taken place by that point in time. Yep, that's all. I can, I can see.
Well, if we have a student in jeopardy fourth quarter this year, and we make modification on the policy, then that's...
The handbook, carry it.
Yeah, well, handbook is policy. So yeah, I think that we should...
Just, he was going to come back and he was going to discuss it with the athletic director.
Yeah, and then maybe no change.
Or just as opposed to kicking in the extra help at two failures, we're hoping to kick in at one failure.
Do you guys have anything you want to add to the agenda for August? Can we read the elementary school?
Yes. And so I apologize if I made a mistake of having a meeting here and I put it out of the agenda, but it's supposed to be there. But would we want to go every other next year?
Yeah, I'd like that.
That would make it a little issue for me.
Yeah, every other.
So would you like to start? It will, I just will say it will be hot probably in August. So either room is going to be hot, so.
Should the kids have to sit in there? We should sit in there.
Yeah.
Are shorts appropriate?
Shorts would be more, we'll have the skirt and we'll be fine.
Okay.
Can we just maybe ask Kathy when she sends out the board emails to highlight the fact that, not just reminded, like really as a reminder.
We might want to start here. I think we'll have a book fair the first week of school at that point. All of the materials might be here.
Thank you for the input. Okay, moving to our last item, non-public. Do you have a non-public?
So we, yes, I have had some conversation with the board and then supposed to go into non-public, but we may have a non-public session. If we do, it would be under D. If folks want to make a motion, pick a roll call and see all that process.
Right now?
Yes.
So we will need to make a motion going to non-public under RSA ninety-one A colon three. We'll need a motion from...
Three, two, D.
Oh, D, excuse me.
I want to go out on a limb.
No, sorry. Three, two, C. My bad.
And make a motion to go into private session under code ninety-one dash A three, two, C. Second.
Motion made by Jesse, seconded by Ed. We need a roll call on this.
Aye or a...
However you want to say, yes.
Yay.
Ed?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Get in.
If I could have the board disenter in that room, that would be great.